They're both on mail. When are you out here?
Justin.
Sounds good. Sounds good. That sounds good, let's see.
Nineteen years, thirty, where did you come from? No, no, really, what's your last name? Lohm? Contra. Well, worse, every time. Okay, good, because the, the, people come before that. Either. They try to get someone. The in charge of all. Was. For neither guy. They tried somebody in charge.
But it's half two thirty.
Well, he probably knows nobody's.
I know David was a little bit late last time.
Yeah.
Probably traffic. Bob Lee will be here.
Hell, you were on just impressed with your.
Enterprise.
Get out there and get moving. That's right.
The exception of. The police officer.
So they gave us.
Get them all, public.
Public Works?
Public Works. At the, everything in Manhattan. Everything.
Got it worked.
Water super. Say the water waste. Gas.
Oh, I got it.
Gas.
It's in the same.
About that.
All under one. The interesting, see, I talk about it. Anyway. I'm here for y'all. To be. To answer. Just some questions about things. It's amazing, I've been gone seventeen years.
Yeah.
And with no disrespect to any of. A lot of it hasn't changed. The interest in your perspective on that.
Yeah, yeah.
For your passion.
Alright.
After on the gas, I can help.
You hate, it's always been.
Yes. Okay.
Oh.
Is it, is it? Is yours messed up too?
Yeah.
Is, is she is?
Is yours working?
Um, mine's about back at my house.
Okay. Do, do you think yours is on, uh?
Oh, Scott.
Capitals or something? Caps?
Well, there, I know there's a. Password, but I never used. That'd be true. Two years ago.
Thanks for that.
Lots of driving.
Because. And it was a capital. The first. Letter of your first name is capitalized. Second letter is lowercase than the last. And then first two letters four digits of your last, of your phone last name, mine are capitalized.
Oh. Good, I want to keep this.
You only want, you only take four digits?
Oh, I, try the last four digits of your.
Let me get after him, sir.
You don't want me to have this.
Matt. David is on ninety. Uh, we should read for.
He is?
Yep.
Okay.
He's the one that needs to be connected.
Come here, book now.
And then you say the last.
Yeah, I believe.
It shows, it shows it up on this side.
Correct, correct.
I was told about the story, anything against the law.
That's how they set up mine, so I.
Any idea where my password is?
They were?
Well, if they reset. Yeah.
We didn't read, yeah.
Okay.
John, it's work.
Phil, did you have the updates done to yours? Did you have the updates done to your computer updates too?
They told us like a month or so ago that they were going to do it on.
Yeah.
And I assumed they did it, I looked it up.
Okay.
They couldn't find mine, so that's why I had to bring mine in for them. Yeah.
I just wondered why.
Let's call this special meeting to city council, uh, to order budget workshop meeting, uh. Called order, we have a quorum here. It's, oh, I'm sorry, three, I have to always say the time, three thirty-five P M. On Tuesday, July twenty-second. And we do have a quorum of four council members here. And citizens' comments, is there anyone out here who'd like to make citizens' comments? Hearing none, let's move on. Okay? Uh. What this is going to be, it is expenditures of the city of Castro enterprise funds. Discuss of unfunded operational and capital expenditures of the general fund. Um. Let's go through the enterprise fund. First is what we're doing, right?
That's correct.
Okay? Uh, I think if I'm not mistaken, and I hope everybody's got it. I think everybody has now been provided, uh, a line item budget. For, for each one of the funds to show that, uh, and. Not trying to reinvent the wheel or go back in time, but, uh. I think for some of us. Well, myself and Bob Lee, I know, uh, that's historically the way we've done the budgets. Is typically go by department through line items and kind of. Yay, nay, whatever, and then not really get bogged down, but. Because there's some questions in some of the line item expenditures in different ones. Um, one thing I'm going to ask before you move forward, I seen you have a section for gas. Electric. And then in the enterprise fund? Cause there's no admin. Expenditure sheet provided. Line item.
There is, there, there is, uh, there is a line item. Budget in your presentation, we're going to talk specifically about what we give the administration budget.
Okay.
So the administration budget, you see it stand alone.
Okay.
I'm going to make sure my mics are these on, yeah? Hello? Um, so the administration budget used to be a standalone budget, one of the things that is.
Excuse me, excuse me, so let's make a note that David Morris just arrived, please. Three thirty-eight.
Welcome, David. So this has been a concern of mine. Basically, since I was, since I got here, asked, the public works had a separate administratilities.
Okay.
And when we did our rate making. Um, you know, we generally have relied on, I don't know who the cities used over the years, but since I've been here and probably the few years prior to me getting here, we've used Schneider Engineering to help us do our rate making. So they go through and make sure that we're following the procedural processes outlined by state law to, to establish our utility rates on a cost basis. And we would provide them all of our costs, including the administration budget. And so they would build those rates, um, utilizing the, the, uh, process that, that they had put in place to do that. Um. But it still was a concern of mine that the administration budget could get away from you and you wouldn't be able to see the full cost for, by utility.
Okay.
So one of the things that I challenged our staff with for this budget year was to, uh, fold the administration budget into each of the utilities. Now, we had already started last year, there are several items that really should have been, that were utility specific. Uh, some of the expenses, the, that were in the administration budget that should have been in water, for instance, we went ahead and moved to the appropriate utility. So we did. Some of that last year to clean it up. And what was more or less what was remaining in the administration budget were all the things that were, would be considered non-departmental in, in any other situation.
Right.
Um, and so we took that and we divided it out into each of the utilities by percentage of revenue.
Okay.
In other words, it's by ability to pay, which. There's a lot of different ways you could look at dividing it up, you could divide it up based on the number of people. Full in each utility, uh, their expenditures, other ways of doing it. Um, I, my personal strategy, if you will, for, for doing that is by based on ability as. Their revenues grow, they'll pay a bigger and bigger percentage of the, of the administration budget.
I agree with that.
I think that works, you know, long term, it makes sure you don't, you don't end up with a broken system.
Sure.
So one of, one of the slides that, uh, was requested that, uh, by Councilman Lee that we had is in this. Those your expenditures by utility and your revenues by utility, so you can see which ones are black and which ones are in the red.
Right.
And it's real. And. The black here, obviously, gas is going to be one of those two that's in the red. That. It talks about the administration budget and how that administration. But. Is now imperative, there's all, all the, but if you want to see a line item budget, that'll be, there won't be much line item stuff in this presentation.
Okay.
All the line items have been provided to you, they're in the Excel sheets, in the link that Leroy sent, and in this presentation, at the end of it, he was going to show you how to get that, like, he was going to walk you through. He pulled up the email he sent, click on the link, show you where it takes you, and then the files that are available to you.
I thi- I think he provided printed copies to, I know I did, I said, I don't do a computer. I don't want a side-by-side computer screen, I, it rolling back and forth, I want everything printed, so I asked him and he printed them out.
But you don't have a printed copy of the administration budget?
Okay.
Is that what you're telling me?
That's correct.
Okay, we'll get you that.
For that.
Yeah.
Uh, uh, well, I didn't see it, I, I see the four utilities, but I do want to make a comment and. Rowan said is. The units of the city, the official name, one of Claire's utility system and the, is a business owned and operated by the city.
Correct.
It's a for-profit. Business owned and operated by the city. The general fund is generally a nonprofit, it's tax-based, it's taxpayers' money, sales tax, property tax, utility system. You have the power, even though I don't advertise this, you have the power to set whatever rates you want, you have the jurisdiction, this sport, this body does. The only thing that controls your rates is the voting box, if you don't want to be here anymore. So the state doesn't have jurisdiction over the city's utility rates.
Well, they do, they do establish rate-making parameters, so we are required.
They don't have jurisdiction, I, I can tell you that, they don't have jurisdiction over your rates. Your rates are established by the entity, the government, the owners assist. Uh, but having said that, obviously. We want to keep our rates down as much as we can and be fair stewards of that, because, uh. And then the airport is an enterprise fund that operates under different rules, but the utility system. Is the business owned and operated by the city, and it's not the general fund, it's not the taxpayers owning, it's utility system that owns. Okay, and the utility system is the city, so however you want to figure that out. Uh. We can go through this stuff, I know there's going to be some questions on some line items, some questions on different things, I know I have them. I think Mr. Lee has them, I'm not sure if others do, but, uh, we're open to whatever you guys have.
All right, this is your meeting, so we want to make sure we're, we're, and we have about two hours or a little less, so we want to make sure that we're being efficient with our time.
Sure.
Um, and it's however you want to present it, we have, how long, how many slides?
It's about twenty-one, but probably about eighteen.
Uh, is this, is just, I'm going to ask you this. Straight up. We had our first meeting, which was, uh. Overview and staff came in and presented those and gave us, uh, basically the questions of a same thing, reduction and expansion, and we understood that. Then out of that, uh, uh, I don't know if you got any questions. But, uh. Out of that, you developed the proposed budget, then we had that come at the last time. Uh, but what I came up with, there were still some questions about wanting to see the line items, because that's what some of us were used to, we're seeing pretty the council and how they want to see this. But I'd rather delve, dive into each individual's departments. Line items, if somebody has any questions, then just doing broad stroke, because there are some questions about what certain things are. And I see a lot of the guy, a lot of the, excuse me, a lot of the staff is out here right now that may, maybe able to support you or whatever, and some of the questions that may be asked. I don't know, but that's my position, but I would yield to the council what they want to do. Anybody have any thoughts?
I'm used to line by line, I need to know what's being spent on what, to make sure that. All the training is accounted for. Or we're putting up money towards that, everything like that. I, I'm.
So basically, we've seen a broad picture, now we want to go down into the details.
Yes, because citizens are going to ask us.
Yeah, I can.
That's.
I don't really feel like I need to go budget in the millions of dollars, but if everybody else feels like they need to, then I guess we will.
I guess, maybe I'm a little confused, so we're going to listen to Leroy's. Presentation. And then people can have what you're.
I'm fine with.
On line item budget by just raising and asking questions.
Eight hundred thousand.
Well, he said four, but you're telling me you really need to have an additional four or something thousand in the sewer and the wastewater budget?
No, understand your electric rate, your electric has been the dark horse. You know, they're for as long, you know, for like a lot of small towns that own their own electric utility. Your electric utility subsidized your other departments for a long time. And when, when we got here in twenty, when I got here in twenty twenty one, one of the first things we did is we looked at the rates and we looked at that subsidy. And in order to do away with that subsidy on some level, we tried to right size the water and sewer rates. We set our water and sewer rates and it was a pretty substantial increase. We didn't do the water and sewer rates as standalone rates. We combined the two of them so that hopefully combined they'd be able to bear the weight, if you will, of their expenses. Now, what you're seeing is basically the result of three years of not updating our rates. We haven't changed our rates and you know, part of this is also by design. The whole, you know, the whole concept, one of the reasons I was hired was this city was facing a tremendous amount of growth. Five thousand lots potentially under development. I mean, that was the tidal wave that we saw coming from San Antonio and you know, make no mistake, that's still there, it's still present. What's changed in the interim is the state laws about, you know, whether that allow disannexation from ETJ, et cetera. Whether or not those will actually be in our city limits is in question, but they will still be in our CCNs, right? Absent further legislative changes or other difficulties, we should anticipate that those water and sewer customers, most of those five thousand lots that are, that are potentially developable in this Castroville ETJ and surrounding area are in our CCN, our water and sewer CCN. You notice I'm not mentioning electric, that's a real problem. Our electric, while it has been, and we knew this, you know, we saw this coming and that's why we did the rate changes we did in the past. We knew that electric, to the extent that it had been subsidizing your other utilities, couldn't do that in the foreseeable future because eventually your water and sewer customers were going to more than double the number of customers you have for electric. So it's really important that you get your water and sewer rates right. And so we did that, but again, for the past three years, we really haven't made changes because we, we're going to see these water and sewer customers coming. And they've been, instead of there being a full open faucet of them, you know, just coming in the droves, we've been getting them in onesies and twosies because the houses, you know, the housing market, as you know, did what it did. It just all halted for about two years and we're just now seeing a pick up again. You know, you can ask who you want, what that's going to happen.
Let me, let me, let me hold off and then I could comment about that too. And I don't want to interrupt you too much, but I will tell you this on water and wastewater. And city Castro is no different than a lot of small communities that have those. Unfortunately, they use them to entice development. They subsidize those things. Developers by rule, by rule, the city can charge the developer one hundred percent of the cost of getting the service. You don't have to give any of it back. And I can give you an example, today I met with a development that's funding more than seven million dollars worth of improvements at absolutely zero cost to the utility I work for. And in order to obtain service. So it can be done, but it's just in a lot of communities, they don't want to force that. They'd rather use that as an entanglement. So I believe if the city on new development actually assess the charges for growth that they should, that they, that they're allowed to assess, it would help cover some of these costs for growth.
I think, so it's a mixed bag with Castro because when I got here, you had the Alsatian Oaks agreement in place. That's an interesting one because you did what you're saying. You know, on the front end, the developer paid a hundred percent of those costs.
Right.
On the back end, however, they're getting repaid for those costs, right?
Right.
And that's where it's different, that's where it's vastly different from what you've just described.
Sure.
On the other agreements that we have, the developer is paying those costs and then we're collecting a, then their builders are also paying us a impact fee.
I just wanted to throw that out there, that there's, 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 there's ways as growth with the water and sewer CCN to, to, you're obligated to provide service, but you're not obligated to provide it.
Free, right, yeah, I understand.
You're having to recover all the costs.
I think we're on the same page there. Our challenge has been that like specific, specifically with the elevated tower and the well site is that, that the improvements that are needed are exceed the prorata participation of any individual developer.
I understand.
So we're having, you know, that's where, you know, we really did something unique in this five party agreement. That's virtually unheard of, but the city sought to take five developers and put them together in a deal and did in fact do that. And that's highly unusual.
I didn't want to get you sidetracked with the budget, I just wanted to.
I think Councilman Lee had another question.
You know, I'm thinking thirty two million dollars for a tank and a well, just, just for water side of the house. And we've known this train wreck was coming when we lost electric stuff. So are you projecting that with these new developments and the impact fees, which we have no impact fee committee we need to get, that they're going to be able to cover? Right now, we're not covering the cost of operating the wastewater plant is what I'm seeing. And so when we get these new developments all online, are you telling me there'll be enough revenue coming in that we'll be just fine? We wouldn't have to subsidize it from electric if we add it for those other things?
That's certainly the goal as we add more people, but it's just something you have to keep an eye on every year. You have to, and that's where I go back to the importance of baking in the administrative costs. Because you need to see your true cost of service and you need to see it proportionate to each utility. And until this year, we really didn't have that. We, we did it through Schneider, but that was, it was baked into an Excel in their rate making.
What do you attribute those large deficits to primarily? Cost of operations, cost of, no disrespect to anybody here, staff, cost of equipment, cost of what?
Well, when you, yeah, when you look at, honestly.
What's the biggest point of a three hundred thousand dollar loss in the gas system?
Well, part of it's just the size of our system, right? If we had caught, some of these costs are pretty static. In other words, you know, you need a certain number of people to run this utility. And so those are fixed costs in a very real sense, but we have, we just don't have as many rate payers to divide those costs over that, which makes your rate higher.
Okay.
And it, and we, like I said, we've been trying to keep the rate artificially low for the last couple of years. Artificially meaning knowing it wasn't fully recovering its, the cost. So I would suggest that that's, that's really what's going on is that you don't have enough rate payers for the cost. But that'll be something that, you know, you all can look at me, look at with me and tell me what. I personally think that we're pretty frugal. And when I look at our costs, I just don't see anything that comparative peer to peer, looking at other utilities, how much they spend in certain areas. I don't feel like we're, we're out of line, like out of whack and spending a lot of money in a certain area.
The sewer system, for example, four hundred and forty five thousand dollars, four hundred and forty eight, I can't see it all. Anyway, deficit and two years ago, it was a seventy percent increase in per unit cost of wastewater bill.
Yeah, there's, there's.
So, so what happened?
Well, there's two things in, that are going on in the sewer plant. One is their debt service, so they have the highest load of debt service because of that fourteen million dollars that was issued to do the plant. So they're carrying a huge debt load.
Okay.
If you looked at right now, one of the things that I'm proud of, I don't think he was here.
That explains a lot.
One of the things I'm proud of Paxton for doing is, is he's really gotten some of our utility expense under control. You know, and I don't know if that was the belt press, not running that or some of the other things he's done, but, but there's a number of things he's done to try to get utilities. Right now, if you looked at the percentage basis on his budget alone, he's at sixty two percent spent. Now compare that to where he should be at seventy five percent. So he's well below and utilities overall were at like sixty five percent, I think. Sixty four percent, all the utilities combined, year to date, they've only spent sixty four percent. But in July, we paid the debt service. Debt service is one point two million dollars.
Right.
In July, when we pay that debt service, they're going to go from being sixty four percent of their budget spent to seventy four percent of their budget spent.
Right.
So the debt service plays a big, big role in those costs.
Right.
And that's, I bet, but when you, but what makes me happy as a manager, looking at the cost, you know, how they're spending money. I look at how they spend based on their budgets and they're routinely spending less. And that's where I go back to probably one reason, maybe we're a little too conservative on our expenditures. It's hard to, you know, it's hard to see that frankly, even when we're looking line by line. And by conservative, I mean where we're overestimating how much we're going to spend in any given line because we really, we look, you can, we've given you all the five year average of how much was actually spent in each line item. And then here's the proposed line on for this year. And there's not, with a few exceptions, there's not many that are out of whack. Like they're right in line with kind of where our historical spending is for that, which is, which is good.
No, I know that many years ago when the city, the utility system was the, was the backbone, was the one that had the money until the end of the year and they, they took whatever amount they needed from the enterprise fund to balance the general fund.
Yeah.
And then the auditors got finished with depreciation and all of a sudden the eight hundred thousand dollar net that the utility system had turned into a negative. And that seemed to happen a lot.
Well, and depreciation will eat your lunch all day long because that's the amount, that's the amount of money you should be reinvesting in capital, which most cities don't, can't afford to do and we're no different. We really can't afford to do that. I think that's kind of.
I guess my point is back then is the transfers to the, to the, from the utility system to the general fund. It wasn't prorated people, it was just a straight dollar transfer and everything's paid out of the general fund. It was eight hundred plus, close to a million dollar transfer. But then they went back and changed it to, okay, well, we'll just do percentages of this and percentage of that. When I talk about the total amount, if you add all that total amount, it's still pretty close. It's just the fact that you look at, it's how you look at it because the utility system would have to have admin people, would have to have this. So, so paying a prorated cost of that is part of doing business.
Yeah, right.
I understand that.
And right now, if you were to add up those three numbers, as you stated, that would be the right of way maintenance.
Yeah, yeah.
The franchise fee and the direct pay, it's eight hundred and fifteen thousand dollars.
Right, that's, that's the point I'm looking at. That, that number is, is that's, that's generally the burden the utility system has to the general fund. And then you add on top of that the debt service requirements of the utility system, the sewer plant, the water system improvements. I'm assuming the electric upgrades, the whatever, whatever is that, so I don't, I'm not familiar. And then you're talking to me about a potential half million dollar deficit in a budget. But yet we're just approving a three and a half million dollar, possibly up to a twenty million dollar debt. How are we going to pay that?
Yeah, I, I get it. So that's, that's where it's really important.
We're going backwards.
We have an idea of how much our future, you know, how many of those rate payers are coming on board and what's their ability to pay that debt. For the interim, one of, that's, so there's two things that, that I want to make sure council is aware that we're trying to insulate the system from. One is just understand on that elevated storage tank, you know, I'm still, we are not a hundred percent committed to doing a water development board borrowing. I'm still looking for a developer to stay, you know, to step forward and pay for the whole thing. And you know, that isn't completely outside the realm of possibility. We have some large developers, D R Horton and others, who have the means and ability to do a project like that, who are incentivized to do it because they want the houses tomorrow, they don't want to wait two and a half years, which is what it would take. So that's still a possibility. I don't know what the likelihood is.
I'm not saying we don't need these things.
Yeah.
I'm not saying that, I'm just asking how are we going to pay for it?
Yeah, so that's two, there's, yeah, so there's two things that are really important to understand as far as how this debt's getting issued and how it's initially being paid for. One of them is the impact fees that are, that are being collected. So we are forecasting the collection of those impact fees as payments against the debt that will be owed.
Okay.
So that's one way the city is kind of securing itself, but that's only lasts for as long as you're getting those impact fees, right? The other way that we have, that we are working on, that I still, you know, we still have in place is the utility service agreements which each, with each developer that will tie them to a takedown schedule and a payment schedule. So that if we were to go through a similar lull, like we've seen over the last two years in housing, they would still have to make those payments. So if we weren't getting building starts that paid the impact fees, that paid the note, they get a, they write us a check instead. So, and they understand that that's the, even though we don't have that inked, they understand that that's what's coming, that that's what we're going to ask them to agree to. And, and we did that, we've been having those conversations for God, three years to make them aware, hey, you know, the city is not going to incur this risk. Now, the challenge for us on this elevated storage tank, and I've been very transparent about this as well, is that the current demand for that elevated storage tank is maybe six hundred thousand L U Es or six hundred thousand gallons. But we want to build a two million gallon tank because it makes no sense to build a six hundred thousand gallon tank and then. So we're looking at like a two million gallons, that means that about sixty percent of that excess volume is unaccounted for presently. Now, again, I think you and I share, you and I mayor share a equally bullish outlook for the future when it comes to once you build that elevated storage tank, I don't think, unfortunately, unfortunately, for the surrounding area, you're not going to have a problem getting commitments. Because once you build it, it will come in a certain, to a certain extent. So I'm not, but that is a risk. The city is essentially owning that additional unspoken for demand that won't be present in the utility service agreements that we have. And I'll continue to make this a statement that as we go through these agreements, as we present the utility service agreements in the future, I'm going to make it clear. I just want to make sure council understands the policy decisions they're making related to that.
Sure.
The risks inherent to it. Okay, I think that's all I have on the utility funds.
Does anybody have any questions?
I do. You know, you make these statements like the developers will have to point to get the money if they're not enough and maybe D R Horton will, will fund it upfront. I've never seen a developer, even heard of one, that doesn't want way more back in repayment than they put out in the beginning.
Well, they, they can want what they want.
Well, and if we want the facility, then we got to do something, right?
Right. Well, they, they want the, the only reason they would do this is to get the water sooner. And if they step up to do it, you know, again, that's, that's what negotiation is about.
I feel like we're at the end of the whip, you know, we're the, we're the part that pops and not controlling the handle. But I'll again say, I think I would enter into some discussions with Saws to take more traffic to the, to the east frankly. I don't know that it does us any good to build more and more and more and more plants and water towers and the rest of that.
What are you proposing, like cutting, cutting our CCN and giving a portion of, okay.
Absolutely.
I want to be clear.
It doesn't do deadly squat for us to grow wherever and everywhere, it just doesn't.
Okay.
It just doesn't. And we already know, you know, rooftops don't make money, only commercial makes money unless the house is really expensive.
Correct.
Right?
That's correct.
And so what we are seeing is thousands of houses and most of the retail is going to be along ninety or four seventy one. And, and so many a town has gotten themselves into a jam with lots and lots of subdivisions without enough income to pay for it. Which means they got to keep raising property taxes and everything else. My eternal question has been, how big should Castroville be? Nobody's ever answered that question, but now we're seeing what's happening in that we've got to scramble to provide all this stuff to people that may or may not want to be in the city. And that's a killer for us, that's a killer. That's why Saws has got the capacity, the money and everything else and they're butt right up against us to see if possibly we could divest ourselves of some of these responsibilities.
Okay, I want to show you one other thing. So that slide shows your over under by utility, but keep in mind that you have two utilities that are in the black and that would be the electric department. It's, you know, profitable to two hundred and fifty thousand and, and refuse or garbage, it's profitable to the tune of fifty thousand. Frankly, I don't know how much we're going to make on, on garbage because we have a new contract, we're going to have to experiment some with that. We are going to have some additional commercial growth over the life of that five year contract. So I, I fully anticipate that garbage will become more and more profitable for us. And I think that this is a conservative revenue estimate, frankly. Um, and I think that this is a conservative revenue estimate, frankly. But don't lose sight. So it's not a eight hundred thousand dollar deficit, right? It's a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar deficit because you have both electric and water that are profitable. So if you, uh, back up and look at the, uh, expenditures versus our proposed revenues, your revenues are nine million, two ninety-eight. Uh, that's, well, your, I'm sorry, use of fund balance is four hundred and eighty-seven. The four eighty-seven is where your real delta is. So if you're only trying to make up the delta and not use a penny of, of fund balance, you wouldn't need to make up, uh, these deficits in those rates. You would only need to make up that four hundred and eighty-seven thousand. You'd only have to make up about half of it in order to recover and be, and have the system, the overall system recovering what it needed to recover.
Before we dive into department line item things, I'm just asking you one last question. What's your recommendation or your thought on making up that deficit?
I want to look at a ga- a potential gas rate change. We all know, everybody in this room knows that we got a good deal with CPS gas for years. They just, they, we got a good deal. Um, we tried to sell the system. You may or may not have voted to sell it. I don't know what, how each of you felt about in that arrangement. I had, I personally had mixed feelings because I saw the, the future, uh, number of customers that will be in the gas system, uh, out to our wet, uh, our, our, our east, sorry. Uh, there's a lot of new gas customers are going to be built out there. That system will be built by developers and dedicated to the city. You know, yes, we'll have maintenance for it, but man, those gas lines are going to be good for a very long time. And in the meantime, they're going to just be producing city revenue. So I saw that as a true tremendous revenue stream. But, you know, to Bob's stamp, you have point of view, like that's also a headache you're taking on. Um, I knew that our gas system was going to be expensive, but we, and I told you all over and over, we're doing our best to estimate what that might be. We're trying to look at our other utilities, you know, the sewer, the sizes, utilities, what we're spending and, and guessing at what this gas system is going to cost. We knew it was going to cost quite a bit to stand up initially. And that's where that one and a half million, two million dollar range was thrown around. I know there were people in the public that thought I was making up numbers, but, I mean, that was a pretty good number as far as I'm concerned, you know, to buy the capital and, and other things that will be needed to, to stand up that new utility for the city. But bottom line, if I were to make a recommendation, mayor, I think where I would look first is the gas. But I've already stated, I wouldn't want to make that decision in the dark. I'd really like to know, and I understand, Bob, you're saying each utility is different, but I still want to know what is our gas rate compared to the surrounding area? Because it's never a good look to be the highest rate in, in the state or in the region or what have you. So I'd want to know before we rec, I recommended a rate, uh, where that stood or where that fell among surrounding rates. I suspect that at our present rate, our present gas rate, based on the revenues we were making in the past, that we're probably already pretty high compared to our neighbors. But I don't, I want to see that in black and white before I make a recommendation. But that's probably the only change I'd recommend, especially given our, our recent history of being able to kind of get by and be frugal and manage our budgets mid-year or in intra-year to stay within our spending limits. Now that said, you go, you guys have already, for instance, in this year, you already approved a bunch of generators. Those generators aren't coming out of our general fund. They're coming out of our utility fund. Where are they coming from? Our fund balance. So if I were to go look at this year's budget at the end of this year, I said, well, we aren't going to use any utility fund budget or utility fund balance. That's true. To balance the budget for our operating expenditures, we aren't going to use a dime of our, our utility fund balance or at least, I don't know, we'll, we'll see. But we shouldn't use very much at all. We'll find out. However, I have to amend that statement when I think about things like generators that y'all approved. If we end up buying those, we already able, successful with the T D M grant that we're seeking right now, that purchase, which is about a half million dollars, is going to come out of utility fund balance. That's the only place it can come from. So there's one thing that's the operating budget and how we're balancing that on a year-to-year basis and what we're doing with our rates to do that. And a completely separate issue, policy issue that's, that you all are involved with, which is what we're doing to invest in our utilities and where that money is coming from to do that. Is it, is, you know, we borrowing funds and raising our rate and what have you. Okay. Um, any other questions? Yes, sir.
I wonder, and, and this really is responsible. I mean, earlier you just told us the reason we're, we're, we're so expensive per capita is because the size of our utilities. But if our utilities grow, then that deficit should go down. So in my personal opinion is, is I would disagree with Bob. I, I don't think we should give up our territory of where we can sell our utilities. We, we built this sewage treatment plant, which will hold a lot more capacity than what we have now. So here we can bring in more capacity, more revenues without expanding sewage treatment plan. So I think if, if future councils make that decision, they need to be very careful on giving up.
One, I don't know what that does to our impact fee situation, but certainly, you know, the sewer plant, which the city went to great expense to expand, like you said, is that it's not even near full capacity. And that was done with the idea that we're going to get all this growth in our C C N, in our, in our area where we'd be accepting more sewer. So it would make us look kind of foolish for having made those expansions.
Was it's, it's commercial is where the profit is.
Well, that's one reason why with these developments, as they came forward, this is, we're going to talk about the D A policy, I think, tonight. You know, one of the things that's present in that policy is this, uh, requirement for commercial. And it's for that very reason, because the prior council made a, uh, policy decision that as these developers came forward, we wanted to, to make sure they had commercial. And y'all may or may not have been aware of or, or watched. Some of the pushback we got from the folks on four seventy-one, especially some of those neighbors right there, um, next to heights of Castroville. Because now what we said is we want commercial frontage on four seventy-one. Don't, don't make that all housing. Um, recognizing that Country Village is exactly that. It's all housing, all the way up to four seventy-one. We said, no, we want you to put some commercial out there, even if it's only a little bit, even if it's professional office space. We need commercial to offset the value of those houses from a property tax standpoint. And, um, that was, again, it's, it's, it's with that revenue mindset. And again, it's not because the city is trying to make a profit. It's because we're trying to make sure that the services that citizens currently enjoy are there for the long term. That we're able to afford to do those things in the long term.
Well, the change in the, uh, write-off of your, uh, what was the one they just did in legislation where you could write off the cost of your, uh, facilities the first year instead of having to spread it out over time. You know what I'm talking about?
No.
The depreciation?
Depreciation. You can write it off in the first year a hundred percent. It was in the bill, I believe. And, uh, instead of having to do it over ten years, five years, whatever, for, uh, for commercial businesses. And what would that mean to us? The, the other thing is our C C N is huge. Okay. It is huge. And so we're talking about taking care of what we have right now, but there is tons more out there to the north, which is going to be more elevated tanks, more sewer.
Well, hold on. The, our C C N is only so big. Uh, Yancey is to our north. Um, there is an un, there's a no man's land, which is basically the Shearheart property and the property next to it. Um, I see you granted, you, again, the mayor knows more about this than I do, but there's a no man, yeah, there's a no man's land kind of north of us that really isn't claimed. Um, and it's going to be, we'll see how that develops. As far as legislation goes, you know, hell, you know, what, what will the state legislature do with commercial property taxes in the future? Right now, there's a lot of breaks for your individuals. Are they going to do something for commercial payers or developers or who knows? You know, I mean, that's a, you have to make decisions with the information you have today. And that's kind of where, what we're trying to, to do. But, okay.
So can we move on to the airport because we're?
I wasn't going to move on to the airport. Y'all have it. It's, there's the airport. I know it's really important to one guy on the council. It's not a utility. It's enterprise fund. We can make a special meeting just about airport at some point in the future, but, uh, there are some policy decisions related to the airport. They're going to be made at a future council meeting, such as setting the hangar rates, whether the council is going to make that decision or staff. I'm ambivalent. Uh, it's whatever y'all want to do. The fuel rates, there's some discussion about fuel rates. And so, so there's some things related to the airport budget. It's pretty simple, pretty basic. I would suggest you not spend a whole lot of time on that, uh, unless you absolutely want to.
I absolutely want to.
Oh, there, we need, we need to, to go over it because we got to make sure, because in years past, we have set the hangar rates because we have to make sure the index, the C P I is, is applied right and everything. So that's another subject. I was just seeing, are we going to be able to ask questions about the different utilities now? Because I do have questions.
We're going to go to the line items on each one.
It's up to y'all. You tell me.
What you want to do?
Yeah, I just have questions on some of them.
Yeah, let's go, let's go there then.
All right. So on gas department. Uh, you have projected right now three hundred little, what, three hundred and twenty? I can't read this. Three hundred and twenty-nine thousand for your grand total?
Which one?
Three thirty. Okay. This is under personnel services.
That's gas.
Okay.
How many positions is this funding?
About that. That's my number one question. How many F T Es?
How, how many positions is this funding?
Do you know off the top of your head, Leroy, how many F T Es?
One full-time plus two part-time, two half-times. It's split between streets and gas.
So two F T.
So, so it's two P, uh, two F T Es.
Okay.
Plus, excuse.
Plus the.
Plus the admin portion.
That's correct.
So that would be, for example, when you have certain positions that are, i.e. some as high as seventy-five percent are charged to the utility system, it's one fourth of that, or one fifth, excuse me, of that, of that percentage. Am I correct in the way I just said that?
Yeah.
If you had an employee, for example, position that's fifty percent enterprise, it would be twelve, it would be ten percent on each one of the utilities. The four plus garbage. So each one would be ten percent, spread their salary across them.
Right.
Correct? Or you would, excuse me.
It would be based on the revenue.
Is based on the revenue.
Yeah. So if, if like electric brings in sixty percent of the revenue, they're going to pay for sixty percent of the.
Got it. Got it.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. That answers that one. So, so basically two P, uh, electric. So I've, I've got some questions here. Um, does the budget include, uh, for their training, education and training? Is that enough money to get our two apprentices, the training necessary and certification for them to become like journeyman?
Well, what's the time period to get, to get them there? Because the books take how long?
It's to the, uh, the apprentices, the education. But it averages about a year per book.
Okay. So the city doesn't have a standard of, we need to get this done because it's going to impact.
Well, what we're saying is they're training, what we're saying is the training takes time. And, and you can't do it all in one year if you wanted to. It generally takes a year per book and there's four books. So you're asking a question, and we're just clarifying that there's a little bit of a fallacy in the, in the way the question is being worded because yes, there's enough training to do the amount of training they can do in a given year.
Okay.
That's what you do to.
I, I think. I want to ask, ask this real quick, spin all that on the gas. Uh, and I'll be, are you going to correct me? Because if you, if I'm wrong, because you're familiar with working with West Texas before. There is. Basically no certification for gas.
Correct.
There's qualifications.
Correct.
And each owner, operator, i.e. the city of Castroville, gets to determine what the level of qualifications there are. Even the railroad commission does not certify.
Right.
They qualify.
Correct.
Am I correct in that? So, so, so yes, the training is important. But once the training, you're satisfied with the training and you consider them qualified for that covered task, they are qualified to work your system, not somebody else's, but your system.
Yeah.
Each system has to do on qualifications. Am I correct? Is that still that way? Yeah.
Well, I know electro, but I know electricians, they got to have it.
Well, there's no requirements for those two. It's up to the utility to set those standards.
I, but I thought there was some federal criteria for gas employees.
There, the, 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 the railway commission is the primacy agency for the United States Department of Transportation Pipeline Safety Division that runs natural gas.
Yeah. If you're doing a, if you're doing a certain task, you have to qualify in that task.
Every task has to be qualified.
You have to be qualified in everything.
Right.
If you are doing that task, they want you qualified to do that task.
That is correct, but it's, it's up to the owner operator, i.e. the city Castroville, to determine who is and who is not qualified to work on your system. It's very important to get the training. Don't get me wrong, but the actual qualifications is up to the city to qualify.
The, the reason I'm asking this question is I know Tom's retiring.
Right.
And that will leave us one journeyman and two apprentices.
I understand that.
And so if there's a call or something, that journeyman's going to be very, very, very busy because those apprentices legally should not be responding by themselves.
Exactly.
That's my concern.
I understand.
You have one tech two. He, he's on his second book and he has lineman college. We do have two apprentices. Uh, we just found out that one of the apprentices is, was registered in the merchant program a few years back. So he has completed book one. We just need to make sure it's still valid now. Being that there's time in between him going to book one, books two, we just had to do some research.
Well, I don't, I don't want anybody to take us the wrong way. I really don't, but you have to help me, correct me if I'm wrong. Uh, the state requires licensing for water and wastewater operators. That's a given. That's a license requirement of the state. It's up to the individual utility to establish the qualification levels for gas and electric. It's not a state required. It's up to the individual utilities to determine at what level of training they get to what level it is.
I, I, but I thought when we were talking about selling the gas utility.
Yeah. So there's, that's what I was thinking. So that, that's sort of true, but, but like for gas training, there's some minimums that
Oh, I know.
that you have to receive.
I don't know.
That this, the railroad commission is going to say, you know, yeah, to each, each, so each system is responsible for establishing its own training guidelines and its own training processes. Yeah, yeah. But there are some, some standards for what makes a, a, a qualified gas, you know.
I won't argue with you.
Tech, right? So we have some basis, but we, you know, that's one of the things I'm very proud of with, uh, John and Ricky's effort with, related to the gas system. I mean, over a year ago now, I think we had like fourteen folks go through a, a basic training, including our E S D and many of our current public's work staff to ensure that we were preparing ourselves to take over the gas system. So he's really been laying some groundwork, uh, to get that done. Uh, but this, this budget and the proposed budget, it's really about standing up a gas utility.
Well, she, you know, I'm sorry for interrupting you. I, I'm all in favor of training and, and supporting folks. I am. And we have to have qualified staff. Uh, I'm, I'm just making the point that we determine who the, the city determines the qualified staff. And I understand, we don't want to expose ourselves to a liability by putting untrained people out there. I got it. I understand.
I, I'm just looking at burning out our one journeyman.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
That's, that's my concern.
Yes, ma'am.
And then, uh, my other question is, so council has already approved a bucket truck for the electrical department, but it, that hasn't been purchased yet. I know the current bucket truck is on life support. What's the status of us getting them their new bucket truck that had been approved before?
Which bucket truck?
Yeah, we did it a couple of budgets ago.
A, a big bucket truck or the service bucket truck?
No, I don't know what that's.
Okay. I thought you did. You bought it. You bought a big one.
Now, the C I P had some, yeah, the C I P had some ideas in it. They were approved. They were purchased.
Okay.
I need to look at the C, the C I P in the vehicles section to see if there's another, what you're referring to. But is there a budget bucket truck that's on life support right now?
Yeah.
Okay. But is it a backup or is it?
Is it the small one or the?
So do, do we need to look at replacing it or not?
Two thousand two model.
Yes.
Yeah, from the floods. Yeah, I remember I bought it.
Yeah. So I'm, I'm just trying to make sure that our, we're, we're taking care of our sections because I don't want to burn out our people.
Yeah, I apologize because you brought that up before and I didn't know what you were talking about. I should have followed up with you because, because in my mind, I was like, what is she talking about? We bought the vehicles that were in the C I P. And that's probably what you're referring to.
Okay. Okay. I'm, I'm, like I said, I'm just trying to make sure our people are taken care of, but we're not burning them out, you know? So that, that's my big concern.
My tech.
So, that's, that's.
I can't, I'm not able to.
How many are we supposed to have in the electric, like lineman?
Are you, we're, we're dealing with gas or we're going to?
Line and electrical.
Oh, you're back to electrical. Okay.
We've been bouncing over. Our budgeted positions, we have a superintendent, a foreman supervisor and two techs, three techs. No, electric, for the electric.
How many positions are we supposed to have?
How many are budgeted?
Superintendent, two leader and two, three, yeah, three.
So five.
Apprentices, two techs.
Five in the electric?
They can go anywhere because we know.
Yeah. So there are five budgeted positions in electric.
So when Tom retires in five months, how, what are, how do we feel about getting those positions filled?
We have one right there.
But he's, he's, but I understand that, but, so who's the, gonna be the superintendent?
He, he is the superintendent.
Okay, who's gonna be the foreman or?
Once the position becomes vacant, we would post, and then we would search for qualified individuals.
Okay, um, just trying to make sure we got our people taken care of.
We're working on it. Councilman Lee.
Okay.
Would you go ahead and down the table, we'll get to me.
Mr. Marchand, did you, uh, we, we, we were up on them all, we're just talking about them all?
Yep.
Okay, Mr. Marchand?
On the electric, um, and I, it might have been you, but there's, a month ago, or maybe a month and a half, in Cuthbert Village, middle of the night, in, in, and one guy had to respond, and by himself in a bucket truck, and, which is not good. And I don't ever want to put anybody in that situation, so I'm asking you guys, does this budget cover that in the future to where you're not putting somebody by themselves in a bucket truck in the middle of the night?
We're trying to edit the words of these two people. In the past, we didn't have that much staff, and for a while, we were short-staffed in the big period. So luckily, I had the qualifications and I'm very safety oriented, so I wanted to, um, fill.
Yes, sir.
Can you look up how to do it?
Yes, sir. So Tom, you think in the budget that we have, you're covered to do what you need to do?
I think so.
It's okay to say no.
Yeah, I, I think we're alright. We're obviously getting by now, and our problem was with our turnover, with our personnel, we bring down people in, they start to learn, and they realize.
Yeah, but it's not up here.
Is there something that we need to do to address that in here? I mean, will we bring them in at a higher rate where they won't leave?
Well, if you could get, if you could actually hire them in as, as a, a journeyman, or somebody that's in a third, taking attendance, and paying a board to come in, but the ones we're getting out because they're coming in, they just wanna get paid.
Yes, sir.
That they realize they can go somewhere else and make more. You know, there's nothing in all that money, what you think you do, what you deserve, and this and that, people always want more.
Sure, understand.
At the point where you, you got to pay out, but we're a smaller utility, small man.
Right.
They'll deal with the same hazards, the same dangers, but we're gonna change the ride, it's right here today.
We've got it, you know, it's a similar challenge we have across almost all of our positions, in that if a person's willing to go work anywhere in the state or in a different state, they can always go leave for more money. It's just that, but we try to, to incentivize with quality of life, with where you are. Yes, we're a smaller system, yes, you'll never make as much money as even Medina Electric, but your quality of life will be better because you're not gonna travel as much, you're gonna get to know a system, you're gonna learn everything you need to learn, et cetera. So we, we try to push on that, but, um, yeah, we've had a few folks, now, bottom line is the budget, the current budget provides that amount of money. The proposed budget provides that amount of money, so the answer, answer was yes. The longer answer is, you can never one-hundred percent prevent that from happening because if you have a situation like we had where we had two people quit the day or two before, you know, we just, it was a bad timing, I mean, there was, uh, we filled the positions relatively quickly, within the space of less than two weeks, we had the position filled again, um, but because they were vacant at the time, that particular incident happened, it was a real challenge. We are working, I don't think it's been mentioned, but we have been working with some, uh, third-party folks like Capital Electric and some of the others, some other systems, uh, to provide backup, um, and the issue is, you'll be able to get those people on the phone when it matters, right? And so we're constantly working on those types of relationships to try and make sure we have that in place.
Oh boy, you wanna go or you want me to go?
No, I'm good.
Okay, I have a few questions, just a few, okay? I think Sheena already asked, the first one I had, I'm gonna go right down the list to all of them. The first one was the gas, was how many FTEs, and we just already answered that. The bench stock, a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, is that a swag or is that just, uh, based on fact? That's a lot of money.
Yeah, I asked the exact same question, question, Mayor. Yeah.
Hundred and thirty thousand dollars for bench stock? Is that just a?
I think you scrolled past, I saw a line item for bench stock right there.
There it is, yeah.
Is that, is that, is, I, I, I understand materials cost a lot of money, I don't know how much. To build your inventory?
Well, that and equipment that we produce somewhere. We wanna eventually get to what we were talking about earlier.
Okay.
Making money, but now it's a pass-through.
Okay, so your bench stock is your inventory, your, your materials, okay, not equipment?
That's right.
Okay, so that's the, that's the, that's to fill the bins with the stuff to be able to work with stuff?
Yeah, a few things, but not a lot.
Okay, okay. And I, and I guess, I guess every one of these that has a hundred dollars for furniture is just in case public works needs a new chair or new desk?
Some of that's ad, some of that was admin, so some of that was not a hundred dollar cost, it was like a two thousand dollar cost that then got divvied up.
Okay, utility mapping in the gas, uh, I, I know mapping is expensive, I see it in all of them. I don't know what type of mapping you're using, or if the engineer's doing the mapping, or G I S mapping or what have you, but Javier, I wanna work with you, or John, I wanna work with you guys, uh, I see, uh, some of the reports you have, for example, in the council meeting, and some of the maps on some of the layouts, I'd like to offer some assistance on where I see some of those maps may not be accurate, based on just my knowledge where things were. So I'd just like to offer that to you, maybe help with some of that. The, the asbills, again, I can go back in time, that the city had on the gas system were spot-on because we had to have them because, uh, they were probably the most accurate asbills we had, second to the sewer system. But all of that's probably gone and forgot about, so.
They're somewhere.
Yeah, yeah, but, and I'm sure they are because I, it, it's unfortunate, but a lot of the history went away. So I'm just trying to ask that. Um, the outside contract labor services, you have an engineer working with you on the gas, but do you also use consulting with Simon? You both, use them both, right?
Right.
Yeah, so a big part of that, you're talking about a hundred and thirty-five thousand?
Yeah, well, I'm looking at, you have outside contract labor of thirty grand, and then you have engineering a hundred and thirty-five, and locating fifty thousand, I'm just, uh, and engineering design fifty, so I'm just trying to add all those up and cumulate, I mean, you're looking at two hundred and sixty thousand dollars in expenditures for engineering and outside services, is that? And that's not setting up, that's just going with what you got, operating, so I was just curious about all of that, that's a big expenditure against. I'm not here to, I'm not here to haggle, I'm just here to ask the, the numbers, if, if, if you could support those expenditures.
Yeah, some of those are really good questions, because again, like the bench stock one, I mean, we're, we're doing our best, it, it is a little bit of a swag, it's not a wag, it's not a wag. It's a little bit of a swag, right, uh, but it is our best guess as far as, you know, working with Javier and others who know what it's gonna take to get our supplies and.
And I, and I understand your equipment purchases, and let me ask you this one, Javier, I, unlike what CPS was doing, is it your goal to, once you get gup and running good, you're actually gonna put the services in, you're actually gonna fuse the pipes, you're actually gonna do these things as much as you can?
Yeah, that's the, that's the end goal there.
And, and, and CP, the cathodic protection, I've seen a lot of issues with that, rectifiers and such, and oats, you're familiar with those? Good, that's, that's great to hear. Yes, sir. Yeah, yes, sir. Do you have a history, I'm, I'm asking if it's okay, do you have a history of working with regulatory compliance?
Yes.
Records, okay, good. Simon will help you a lot. We, uh, we, we went through the last seven years, I was, we went through a seven-year stretch with him as a, as a consultant, and it had no violations. He's really good at helping you with that, so I just wanted to point that out.
Speaking to some of the things you brought up, uh, T R C is our consultant that's helping us, you know, basically, they're, they're helping us, um, operate the gas system.
Right.
That contract, when we entered into it, w- we mutually agreed that the goal was to get, to, to wean them off gradually, year by year, as we train up our staff.
Yes, sir.
So that is the plan. Right now, we've got a conservative estimate of what, how long that will take, but that could go a lot quicker depending on, you know, how quickly our staff ramp up to some of that, but right now, that's a big part of that outside contract labor is a hundred and thirty-five thousand. A big part of that's T R C, and in future years, that will, uh, decline, right, we'll, we'll, we'll take that down.
Okay.
The other, uh, the other thing you brought up was the, um, locating, and I, right now, that sixty thousand dollar number is a really good number. Like, that's about how, we're spending about five to six thousand dollars a month just locating lines for gas.
We can locate them?
If there was more personnel, we'd be able to.
Okay.
Right, so that, and that's my point. So right now, as of where we are today, that's a really good number. As we go through next year, as we hire up, train up, get our, our staff ready, I'm really hoping that we'll be able, that will be one light item that I hope we come under budget on, because we should, as we get folks in the door and get them trained, be able to do more of that locating ourselves.
Okay, I was also looking at, uh, drug testing. The gas system is the only one regulatory you're required to do random drug testing for anybody and everybody that touches or has anything to do with the gas. Even the person that answers the phone for a service call has to be on that, that's a random program. So I just, I wanted to make sure you had enough in that for that program, because that's a mandatory thing for gas.
Got it.
Okay, I just thought I'd bring that up.
Thank you.
The other thing I wanted to bring while I'm on gas, really quick, your, uh, your transfers to general fund for franchise fee and, and right-of-way maintenance is significantly reduced from what it was in years past, why? No, I, 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 I know, but I just wanna know why it's been cut in half.
John wanted to recommend.
Oh, I don't, I don't, I, I'm happy with that, but I just wanted to know why.
I don't know, I don't, did we not, did we, I wonder if we didn't make garbage pay last time? There are some, I, I think. Yeah, I'm trying to see if I can pull up the note.
I mean, it, it, twenty-four and twenty-five was lower, but I mean, but before that, it's been progressively going down, and I didn't know if that was just a, you know, it was ninety and twenty-three, eighty-three, twenty-two, a hundred and fifty and twenty-one.
Says this is a placeholder.
So the contribution rate from the gas has been going down, so I was just curious.
It's up there, it's not a helpful note. Alright, um, I think one of the, I think just, uh, ballpark, I'll have to get your answer on that, Mayor, but I think, uh, one of the reasons is, we, I don't believe we had garbage paying, um, right-of-way maintenance or utility. Again, the utility admin is a new expense, so some of these numbers are gonna be different from prior years because we now have added a fifth utility to help pay for some of those costs.
You've had five, you have.
I know, we just, we didn't, we kinda treated garbage as the vast reception, because it was a third-party service, right?
And the drainage utility, you don't charge them anything, you just collect money for it.
That's right, yeah, you're right, so we really have six.
Yes.
We have a drainage utility. It's got no people in it, you know, but it does have some revenue.
You just collect and pay debt service.
Right.
Thank you. Wastewater, I'm gonna ask, uh, uh, I'm, I'm only curious, again, not faulting anybody, I want everybody to get everything, but I'm, I'm, my question is more, and then we can talk about this later, longevity pays, certificate pays, uh, loan allowances and things like that, so I have issues with that. T C U Q fees in wastewater, that fifteen hundred dollars is enough? Are you sure?
Well, there's a T C U Q permit for five thousand down here.
But I think they have an annual operating fee too, they charge.
And there's testing and sampling of twenty-four thousand.
Not samples, that's just a regulatory fee to operate. I just thought I'd ask, check that number, because I don't know if it's, it's.
Which line, which, where is that under?
Under supplies. I mean, I understand your permit.
Oh, there it is.
If you have to renew your permit, I was just curious. It may be the same, may just be on a different.
Well, just looking at our history, if you see our actuals, and it's, could be down to how we, how we code things, frankly.
Yeah, you might take your permit fees and your fees at separate amount, I didn't know, I thought it was just.
But just looking at past years, twenty-twenty-one is twelve fifty, twenty-twenty-two is thirteen hundred.
Okay.
Thirteen hundred, twelve fifty, so it looks like fifteen hundred's adequate.
Again, we're back to the utility mapping, just a prorated share of that, utility mapping your new stuff? You don't require the new developers to give you G I S mapping of the new stuff? Okay, so you. Yeah. Okay, okay.
We are.
Who do you guys use?
H A L F F.
Do they have a mapping program that you guys have access to?
Yes, Ezri.
Ezri, okay, okay, and we use Diamond Maps, so I mean, I was just curious, okay. Contract labor for the wastewater, sixty-two thousand dollars, outside services contract, what is that for? We have an operator, we have a staff, what do we do for outside contract services in wastewater?
Is that part of the, the sled removal or not?
I don't know.
No, that sled disposal's down at the bottom.
Sled disposal, sled disposals.
Sled disposal's down at the bottom.
And then, but, but you have, the senior engineer at thirty and the outside contract at sixty-two, so what is it?
Is that where, is that where out near the Dodge dealership?
No, no. So that's to jet your lines and clean things out? Okay, okay. I know exactly what you do with them, I just, just thought I'd ask what the expense is, thank you, okay? The fifty-nine thousand repairs and maintenance, okay, I got it.
Just letting you know, in case your emails, your, your phones go off, the, uh, one of the outdoor sirens is malfunctioning again.
Where?
I don't know which one.
One of our sirens is malfunctioning again.
Yeah, so, we had, uh, I'd received an email from Mark Chadwick that there's a guy that's gonna come out and service it within the next couple of weeks, but.
I'm gonna keep talking.
We're gonna let him know.
Okay. I'll leave you some time too, so I'll go right through, sir, okay, transfers in and out, blah, 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 blah. Why is our utility systems have, and I appreciate, I got it, but why does each utility system has a line item for employee appreciation, but nothing in the general fund does?
Where do we code that? In council, uh, special events or?
Because in the general fund, our employees are priceless.
No.
All right, I just thought I'd ask, if, if you, if you assess, if you assess that expense to a utility guys, you should expense it to the general fund folks too, so it's to share the cost.
So we have it, right now, we have, so you're asking, why does each department in the general fund not have it? What are you asking?
Yeah, where's it at in the general?
It's in the finance department. If you look into the finance budget.
So it's not broke down by department like it is in utilities?
Right.
Got it, thank you, okay. Well, I answered that one.
So Leroy is paying for all the, uh.
Wait a minute.
That's what I try to do, I either, yeah, sometimes I make John and Leroy.
Wait a minute, let's skip ahead. Wastewater, wastewater, okay, let's go to, let's go to electric, I love electric. You already answered how many full-time equivalents, man, that's a lot of salaries in the electric department. Just thought I'd ask that, same question on the certificate pays or whatever. The, uh, the electric, the wholesale cost, that CPS and L C R A, those are, those are good numbers? Of what, of what we're expecting, because we dropped in cost of the CPS, but yet they're wholesalers to us, drop the budget in now.
Yeah.
They stopped the other one, so I was just curious how that compares.
Yeah, we, we, we're in the, as you know, we're in protracted dispute with CPS, so we'll see where that shakes up. Uh, but right now, that's a good number of CPS, and it's, that's really close to what we're actually spending on a monthly basis. On the L C R A, um.
Is that what the attorney costs so high or?
What? No, the attorney, the attorney for that particular item is pretty low. Uh, we, we, keep in mind, we're budgeting for a possible dispute, right, and we don't know how much that will cost.
I understand.
But right now, our costs to Clark Hill are, are minimal.
What kind of contract labor do you have in the electric department, other than street trimming? Tree trimming, you already have a budget, so what other contract services do you have in the electric department, outside services? Okay. The underground, because, because, no disrespect, it's hard enough to find qualified people, when you get in the underground, it's a whole different world.
So.
People don't realize, when the eight-thousand-volt line is thirty feet in the air, that same eight-thousand volts is two feet in front of you. It's the same voltage, huh? Same hazards. Yes, sir. So I I respect that, I understand it. I just thought I'd ask what what it was.
Yeah, so for instance, during that country village response, we had a third-party contractor that came out and and helped us with that response. There were two or three individuals on the ground from that third-party for six or eight hours.
Got it. Got it. I'll leave you alone. Go to water. Oh, Jeremiah. Oh, man.
Before you leave that mayor, why don't you have him ask you how you burned your hands and had to wear special gloves for a couple of months in electrical incident?
You know what happened to my hands?
Knowing better, but you still did it.
You know what happened to my hands? In two thousand ten, when I'd been gone.
He did not he did not work for the city of Castroville.
No, he did not.
No, I retired in two thousand eight, April, my March, and in May of two thousand ten, I went to check a four hundred eighty volt pump panel. And I had my gloves in my back pocket when I went to pull to check the voltage on the fuse. And it the safety switch didn't open, it crossfaced. And if you ever been standing in the middle of an arc welder, it threw me back against the fence about ten feet back. I stood up and if you can imagine a zombie movie, my hands, they were just hanging in strings. And I all I did was scream, oh, God, don't take my hands and kept doing my thing. They took me to Bamsley, I spent three days in Bamsley, came back with Q-tips on my hands. And over the next year, I wore several long gloves and every time I peeled them off, it peeled the skin off until it had to grow back.
Too many details.
I know.
You asked for it.
Six months after, six months after I healed, I was told that they wanted to take those three fingers. And I'm glad they didn't. Lost the tips, lost the fingers, but I lost the the feeling, but it's still there. So I all of a sudden told everybody, I am a water boy for life and I don't touch electric again. But I became complacent. I did electric here for twenty-five years. And I went home and did I went somewhere else and like I said, the gloves were in my back pocket.
All right, five o'clock.
We huh?
Five o'clock.
Anyway, I just want to tell you a story, it happens. Be careful, you don't get a whole lot of second chances. Water.
Safety moment.
F FTEs, yes, I'm all safety guy. Woo, okay. What am I picking on? I don't want to pick on it too much. Outside service contract labor for water system, a hundred thousand dollars. What do you not do?
A hundred thousand, I don't know where that came from. That's is that that's.
I just thought I'd ask.
Well, just we're spending it pretty routinely, so we spent seventy-eight and twenty-one and a hundred and sixty-nine and twenty-two. Hundred and two and twenty-three.
Do you contract everything out for the? I was just curious, how much how much? No offense, when you have to replace the water line, how much do we do in-house or or contract out? Okay, so.
Little lot.
Yeah. So I was just curious, do we have projects for this hundred thou or help me here? Okay. To come out, fix your controls and things like that? Okay, well, I I I'd just like you to look into that, say, what is what is that? That's a big expense.
Yeah, we can pull bills.
That's a that's a big expense, so I just wanted to ask that one.
But that's based on something that in the past you all have felt.
Yeah, just well, looking at it, yeah, looking.
There's a track record.
Yeah, there's a track record, but I will we'll pull bills and just look at it and tell you, okay, this is what this was, this is what that was, and it'll give you give you a sense for how that money gets spent.
I'm not saying it's not legit, I'd just like to know what it is.
I understand, sure. Yep.
It's it's a it's a big ticket item. Okay. I see there on your on your system maintenance utilities, that's where you would do like your electric, do your controls and things like that possibly. I don't know, maybe, maybe not. Okay, garbage. Again, the FTEs on the garbage, that's the administrative fees, right? Because we don't have any employees involved.
Correct.
Okay. And and so that's where all my question marks are, and that's just a prorated portion of administrative costs.
And we didn't we didn't do that in the past.
The garbage is is whatever the rate is, add an admin fee and pass it off.
That's right.
Okay, I'm done. Go ahead.
Actually, I do have one statement and two quick questions.
Yes. Thank you.
I was glad to see that tree trimming has been added as a line item in the electrical budget for, I think, eighty thousand dollars.
Yes.
Um, do we expect that to cover the full cost of the tree trimming this year? Okay, awesome. Um, and then just in general.
When you say, I want to clarify. Yeah, it's going to cover our full cost because we're going to spend every penny of that amount of money to go trim some trees. Will it trim all the trees that need to be trimmed off of our lines? No, we're kind of on a rotating basis. We aren't able to trim the all the lines that need to be trimmed back. We do as best we can. Our own guys, as you will see from time to time, uh, play the role of trimming trees back when necessary. I saw they cleared a a pretty good amount of trees back right off of ninety last week, last Wednesday or so. So, you know, we still do some of that, but I didn't want you to believe, yeah, that'll take care of all of it. We're that is what's necessary just to kind of stay up with the worst offenders on a annual basis.
Okay, I I guess to rephrase my question. Um, previously, the CIP had essentially spending money out of the fund reserve every year for tree trimming. This eighty thousand is absorbing that.
That's correct, we're putting it in the budget.
Okay, thank you. And then the second question is these line items about like utility system maintenance, building repair and maintenance, they're in every utility. The the scale of those numbers, uh, I am assuming that that is for small bits of maintenance or like break fix, but not for the sort of annualized replacement of.
Lines, correct, yeah, so there's no major capital investment in the in the water or sewer utilities or electric utilities for that matter.
All right, that's it, thank you.
I believe most of your facilities or temporary building you have over there, some other stuff that's revenue out of the wastewater plant, so it should be in good shape. But I was quite surprised at the dramatic increase in electric and water as far as salaries, they went up dramatically. And.
And that that's mostly admin getting moved over because of the percentage of revenue that those utilities represent. That makes sense?
Okay, it still it still appears to me we're taking about seven hundred fifty, eight hundred thousand dollars a year out of utility to put into transfers and administrative costs, which is fine, we're just.
It's eight hundred and fifteen thousand total.
Okay, because I know when I.
For general fund.
The answer was, no, we're not doing that anymore, but yes, we are, we're just calling it something else.
Okay, we miss we remember that conversation differently, but go ahead.
You were there. Uh, which is fine. One of the things I'm big on is is bench stock. And we've gotten in this situation in the past that we needed stuff nights and weekends or anytime and we didn't have it, be it transformers, be it pumps, be it sleeves, put up a broken pipe, be it the boughs, we didn't have it.
Yeah, so I remember you sent me an email about that. I think this is a great opportunity to ask that question. But yeah, I guess a few. Uh, John, so the question was, because you're right, in the past, apparently that this was a real issue. I don't believe it to be an issue anymore is the short answer. We do have quite a bit of bench stock. You can kind of see that as you drive by the facilities and see our laydown yard. But you know, as far as the other utilities, gas excluded, so water and sewer, electric, do you have what you feel to be sufficient bench stock in terms of meters and transformers and poles and pipe and that kind of thing? Right.
Yeah, they were constantly coming into River Bluff.
So when we got, just so y'all know, when we got when we so one of the reasons, going back to why are we in a deficit? Well, one reason frankly is we went and issued some debt anticipating the growth. Hey, there's all this growth coming, we got these agreements in place, we signed these agreements, so it's got to be real, right? Well, we went ahead and issued some debt in the utility fund and we did the AMI project, we did the underground replacement of River Bluff, big, big project. And we're paying that debt service now. And um, that's in addition to that sewer plant debt, you now have ten minutes, that was fourteen million, you have ten million of more recent debt that was issued in the utility fund to do the types of improvements that David and some of the other council members have mentioned, like we 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 developed CIP and then we executed. Unfortunately, growth just fell off a cliff for a period of time, so we're we're going to play catch up for a little bit.
I noticed a time we had a well motor go out. Okay, you just don't go down to Walmart and buy a well pump pumper. And and so I think we had discussed, talking to peerless and some of the other places about if we had one of these critical pump motors go out in a well, what do we do? How soon can we get it back in service? You know, it would be hard for us to operate right now, we lost one of our wells for very long, wouldn't we? And and so I don't know if y'all have made some arrangements, you know, where we might get those parts, if we could get quick response on on some of those critical pieces that could bring us to a screeching hole or not. But I recommend, you know, we we be ready to respond to the unusual, but could be catastrophic to the city if we didn't have a way to bring it up quickly. I didn't see generators in the next year budget, is that coming out of this year's budget?
This year's, yeah, I I answered that via email, you just haven't seen it.
SCADA, uh, SCADA was several hundred thousand dollars, is that this year's budget? Because I didn't see it in here.
Well, it it is, it won't, so what will happen, it's same thing with generators, is your auditor is going to do an adjusting entry based on whenever those purposes are actually realized. But for purposes of the adopted budget, it is in this year's budget, not next year's budget, the SCADA. Yeah, because you approved it in this fiscal year, so we aren't putting it in next year. But when the costs are actually realized, more than likely be next year.
So what you're telling me is, but as a matter of fact, they already gave us a lead time, it's going to put this SCADA selection from next year, I think.
Right.
And so that expenditure is going to come out of next year's budget, but it's not reflected in the budget we got.
Well, there's two things, SCADA and generators. SCADA is being funded from your bonds that were issued. That was a CIP project on the adopted CIP, it was a project that's eligible for those bond payments, so that money is sitting there waiting to be spent, if you want to think about it that way. It will show up in the audit, but but you have the funds to to spend it. The generators are coming from your fund balance. And again, um, that, you know, yeah, it's not in this year's budget, it's in or it's not in the proposed budget, it's in the current budget. Well, it'll be in a budget amendment for this year. The budget will be amended to reflect that purchase, just like it'll be amended to to reflect the SCADA purchase. In effect, when you make those purchases, when you when you make those decisions as council, those minute orders in a in a meeting, you are de facto making a budget amendment in that moment. Now, we bring you a but an actual budget amendment to show you what that looks like in black and white later.
It would be nice if those kinds of things are reflected with a note that we know that these are expenditures that are coming even though they may be covered. We haven't understood exactly what we're dealing with financially to the city and.
We we will remind you that every time you go to spend more money, we'll say, hey, by the way, remember, you've already spent this much on this, but yes.
That's what we said.
Yep.
I thought sled removal was part of the new solid waste contract, wasn't it? I remember seeing those words in there, sled removal.
Yeah, but it's not free, we're still going to have to pay for it. Yeah, they're just providing.
I have to get somebody else to take it to, I mean, we tried and did research.
Right, and that's because waste management was doing our sled removal, so they're doing like for like.
Community development, uh, out of the utility fund, they, you know, the Austin, uh, community development office.
Nothing.
Nothing.
Nothing?
Nothing.
There's nothing out of the administrative transfer?
No, it covers it, you have a list of who's covered by that in your, I sent it to you separately. So in one of the, I think in the same email that you haven't read about the answer to your earlier question is there's an attachment on the, and I in your defense, I sent it at like two thirty today or whatever. But there is an Excel spreadsheet that tells you which who's being paid for out of the utility fund and how much.
Yeah, I did not see that, I don't.
But it's been sent to you, I promise you.
I don't do Excel.
You don't do Excel?
Nope. I don't either.
I'll print it for you and give you a hard copy this evening, sir.
After years of fully with Excel, I'm not feeling with it anymore.
Okay.
Spend the spend the two bucks and and print it out.
How much have you spent printing it out so far?
Printing?
No, since he wanted to know.
I don't know.
Most likely, I should have general.
All right, that that's the utility, so are there any other questions? We've gone line by line, we've gone through the presentation.
Can I finish that much thing?
Yes.
Y'all have barbecue waiting.
Does all permit issuing, correct?
That's correct.
Community Development Office does all the permit issuing.
Yes.
They're housed in the Public Works Building.
Yes.
And so a lot of the stuff that has to do with construction and all the rest of that stuff goes through Community Development.
Yes.
Right? So so why isn't part of that salary paid out of the utility fund?
Building permits or general fund.
Yeah, and there and there are building permit fees that offset those costs. You know, to the extent that it's new development, the new development pays for new development, so we charge and they pay they they pay a premium, right? They pay a ten or fifteen percent admin go cost of that, so and that shows up to the general fund, but yeah, that's a general fund function.
I have I have a question for you and I just want clarity on it, I think I know what it is, but I'm not sure. The Community Council of South Texas, I I've seen that, is that a kind of like an insurance that the city gets or what?
No, that's a great question, so that's part of the.
What is that?
That is the Castro Castroville Cares Program where we do a utility assistance and the utilities pay into a the the South Texas program. We give them a lump sum and then they administer handing that money out to needy folks that are in the Castroville utility system.
We don't administer it.
They do, that's right.
So they determine who's.
Eligible.
Who's eligible and at what level?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, and there's some guidelines there, um, yeah.
I read them.
And and the little history on that, we have so many people having a hard time paying their utilities because of laid off and everything like that. Council and staff, we we talked about this and we wanted to find some way to help our citizens.
Okay, do we have a water leak forgiveness program?
Yes. They have to prove that there was a leak and then we split the cost fifty fifty.
Okay.
Of the not the cost of the repair, but the cost of the bill, so.
How often can they do that?
Once a year.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. So did I misspeak on that? Okay, okay.
Well, well.
Be honest.
Do we want to or do you want to just try this again because we're going to run out of time pretty quick? Okay?
What's the question?
What's enough, yeah, we got about fifteen minutes, what's enough, we want to roll into a general fund discussion? Well, why don't we go to the airport? Let's go to the airport, let's do that one and then we'll come back and talk on general fund. Let's take care of the airport. Because I think that one will go pretty quick.
Thank you all for all you do, appreciate you being here.
Appreciate all y'all.
You got to see some of the sausage being made today.
Y'all 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 do all do great work, it's just there's a lot of questions, okay? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How many FTEs are at the airport budget?
Two, two and a half. Two point, two point five maybe, I don't know, it's not really two point five, but you basically you have Mike and Pete and then you have a portion of Brianna's salary, but it's not a it's it's not even point five.
I'll ask that before Bob asked it, why?
Why what?
What does Community Development do at the airport?
Well, okay, so let's back up. David Kirkpatrick was the airport manager.
Yes.
Full time.
Yes.
It wasn't enough for him. He wanted more duties and so we had him at the airport and then we put him as the assistant public works director. And then he decided to 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 fly away and go somewhere else. And Brianna stepped up and was willing to be the air the interim airport manager. So that's how she ended up in that role. The goal was and still is for her not to stay in that role, that there would be, but there are certain duties that she's still doing. And she gets it's it's a minimal compensation she receives, but she gets compensated for those duties. Ostensibly, we need, we should and have a airport manager, Michael was going to fill that role, he's not in that role yet. But he still could be the de facto airport manager. Now, the issue is the plan was for him to be a part-time airport manager and then have Pete do like maintenance type facilities and we had Harrison as well. So when Michael Haley was hired, you had Brianna acting.
Right.
Manager, Michael hired to be a part-time airport manager, just like David was in the beginning.
Right.
And then Pete and Harrison. Harrison flew the coop. He he left. Suddenly, unexpectedly, took another job somewhere else. And Pete and Michael discussed Michael becoming a full-time employee. And they talked about it with me and Brianna and they kind of presented their plan. And we explained that the airport budget does not have the funds to hire a full-time airport manager. And that if he were to take on a full-time position, it would basically be accepting many of the duties and responsibilities that had been Harrison's. So these. So these are mowing, ma, you know, doing, cleaning the, his terminal. There's a lot of things that would be not typical of a manager to do, right?
The, the only reason I ask you this very clearly, because I've been asked this. In some conversations and presentation, Michael is the airport manager.
Right.
But when you ask Michael, he says, oh no, I report to Brianna. So.
Yeah, he's taken on some of those duties.
Kind of like.
Yeah.
Is he airport manager because he draws a salary of a department head?
No, he does not.
I have him. Okay, I believe it is, but I, I may, I may have read it wrong. So, so I may have read that wrong. Did I read it wrong?
I probably can't read that number though. He's just, it's not, he is not a department.
Okay, okay.
He's not drawing his salary, and that was part of their agreement, because it was kind of weird, because he has the airport manager title. Then he was hired, he was hired as the part-time airport manager. So he is the airport manager in that role, but it is also true that he's toward, still reports to Brianna.
Okay, I was just trying to get a clarification, because I know that's, that's a, that's a subject as far as full-time airport manager, part-time airport manager, what it is. I've, I've seen the city in the past go full circle. Uh, the city administrator was the airport manager when I came to the city.
Thank you, no.
Then they hired an airport manager who was based out there in an office. Then it's changed and morphed throughout.
Yeah, so we're still.
Just trying to do is get it straight.
I don't, yeah, I understand. Um, it, it's, it's my opinion that the current, the present makeup needs to remain as it is for now.
Okay.
Uh, our goal, again.
Still, uh, one day I hope to see the airport lease contracts, because I have, I have a different thought process on some of that, but that's just me.
You, you would like copies of them, or what are you asking?
Yeah, to see what the terms are and the conditions and all that.
Yeah, we can.
Because literally, 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 we are leasing two hundred and thirty-six acres of irrigated farmland at less than what we're leasing two hundred and thirty-six acre feet of water to the city for. And, and I'm thinking, something's not right there. He gets access to all this water and the land at less than what the water system's paying for water. So I just don't know if those are.
That's probably a fair criticism. Like, when we, when we entered that lease two, yeah, I know, that lease is two years old. Do you remember Phil? We entered it three years ago. I don't, yeah, because it's when Lehman, so, so the Lehman's have it. His son moved to Montana or somewhere, and his father took it over.
Right.
We went out for bid. Um, his was the best bid we got, so we did choose the highest bid. But things have happened in the interim, and one of the things that happened is those water rights, as you well know, have gone through the roof. So it's very possible that, that that needs to be relooked at. Oh, yeah, there was forty, yeah, part of that was, uh, forty-six thousand or more in fence improvement.
Agreement with him, does it prevent him from subleasing that water?
I don't know. I couldn't tell you off the top of my head.
Yeah, because, because.
I don't, I would just tell you that, I know he doesn't in practice. In practice, he uses all the water and then some.
No, I understand. He transfers water in.
Yeah.
I got it. But, but I'm just asking if he.
I don't know. I don't believe so, but I don't know.
Just thought I'd ask. Okay. Sir. Yes, sir.
They needed a high-wire fence.
Ah, okay, so did that as a trade-off?
He agreed to put that in as part of.
Yeah, yeah, it's a, and I can't remember the estimated cost of that, but I know it was at least forty-six thousand.
That's, that's.
It might have been sixty-four.
That's really all I have. Thank you.
Okay.
Go ahead.
So we probably need to have, schedule another budget workshop in the near future. You already left, but go ahead.
Yeah, what I want to bring a couple of things up. Uh, this sheet that says airport expenditures here, what I, what I want to note to y'all is, we have dramatically increased fuel sales. That doesn't necessarily mean we have dramatically increased fuel sale profits. And if you go back to actual twenty twenty-four, you see we sold three hundred and twelve thousand, hundred fifty dollars worth of, uh, of fuel sales. And, uh, I'm sorry, that was the fuel expenditure. We sold it for four hundred nine thousand, so we made ninety-seven thousand dollars. If you move down the pipe to before it was twenty twenty-six, uh, we're going to, uh, purchase, uh, looks like three hundred thousand dollars worth of fuel. We're going to sell it for three fifty-five. So basically, we're making less money on more fuel. And so that's one of the reasons I asked to take a look at our fuel pricing and so forth. Not just to move the greatest volume of fuel.
Sure.
And that'll be, that wasn't going to be on agenda today. It'll be on the agenda next time. No, actually, it's, it was last week. It's going to be airport board, which didn't mean unfortunately. And so we need to examine that we get the best return for our money and still fulfilling our obligations to promote aviation. Okay? And so when you see big dollars that we've taken in on fuel sales, it doesn't mean anything until you take out transportation costs, taxes, credit card fees.
You're looking, you're looking for the margin.
Yeah.
What's the margin?
What, what is the bottom line of this?
Sir.
Okay? And so, uh, that's why those numbers can be very, you see, in the past, we got a comparison. Here's what we paid, here's what we sold it for, here's what we made. Okay, entirely the case. Uh, when you get to the proposed items from the, uh, airport budget here that are in your, the handout you got later, it's some vehicles, UTV, uh, storage unit, some other kind of stuff. A lot of that stuff, uh, is a big expenditure in cash. They're probably. The airport has survived forever on a hand-me-down vehicle from the city, so why spend, you understand? Gas from us, and then they use a vehicle that we might pay twenty-three thousand dollars for, and you don't get a return on investment there. And so it's a. And so. Years, and that's when they. Twenty-two, so that was a big bucks about, uh, storage unit equipment. We have five or six scenes of hangers. Uh, that's probably six, four, four, and still electrical upgrade and doors on hang, you know, what that, that means, because that was big bucks.
I think these are great.
They, there's.
They're in here and, and they're in.
Well, I mean, cause I. Hold on. Can you please let me finish my sentence? The courtesy vehicles specifically, I know Sheena, you were there. And Bob, you weren't, because we were going to hit a. Corn. Term if you had been there, but, uh, I want to say Houston was there. But, or maybe it's just you, the mayor. Anyway, um, they mentioned courtesy vehicles specifically, but I, I don't know the source of these items.
Vehicle specifically, apparently they're on life support. So they were talking about getting some, uh, uh, new courtesy vehicles.
I apologize for interrupting you.
Okay.
I thought you had reached the Air Advisory Board. John, uh, is there, please get us a list of your recommendations. Every month, they've had a meeting. He said, we didn't come up with anything or nobody had anything, and I said, we're running out of time, John. We got to have something from you in writing to the council to deal with. Okay? And, uh, last time I asked him, he, he said, I have nothing. You know, they want to get the taxi away on the other end of it. But I'm going to leave the meeting today when we talk about this and say, well, nobody else had anything to say, so we've, we're going to spend money on those. Okay? We're going to spend money on those.
Well, I'll, I'll say, I don't think.
Yeah, I.
Big dollars on something like.
Advisory Board is very important.
But, but I understand, I understand. If the, on a vehicle, are there really, and it used to be, kind of like code enforcement, are there any plans to change out any police vehicles or anything of any condition that could be used?
That's what they have in the past.
That's what they used to use in the past.
Right.
They still have that, and it may be what we.
Yeah, I had to look at our pool and see how, if we have anything that's good. Um, real quick, so the other thing on the airport that's probably important to Councilman Lee and the rest of you is, on the revenue side, when we talk about hangers, we're well aware of that, Council discussion, especially Councilman Lee. With others as well, that you come here and I get ambivalent to it. I don't, I think in some ways. Or I'll make the same argument now, but really I don't care how y'all do it. Ultimately, um, just so you understand, for the revenues that have been proposed, there is a couple of hangers that have a five percent increase, but most of them we left at zero, knowing that y'all are probably going to set those. And that'll affect the revenue that's projected in this, not by a lot, but it'll project, it's, it'll, it'll affect it some. So that goes back to the C, CPI comment that, uh, Councilman Martinez made as well. Okay, uh, so we need to set a future date for a workshop, and I think, uh, we'll also need to talk about, I think, Mayor, what you want to see at that workshop. I know that certainly the general fund is going to be one of those, like, capital expenditures y'all want to talk about, the plus ones.
Let's see, everybody check your calendar. We'll talk about that later if you have the next.
At the future, under future agenda? Okay, perfect.
Yes, sir, please.
On, on hangers, as far as I know, in twenty-five years, we have never had an empty T hang, ever.
Y'all had a, okay, but you've had empty hangers, you have empty terminal space, for sure. I'll give you dates and times and locations and amounts. I know.
And so, uh, we're even. And so if it comes to big hangers, we'd have issues because stuff was left in the wrong condition. You didn't get a guy who wanted to pay the rent and something. But it, you know, it's only two weeks between council meetings, so if we have an issue like that, someone needs to move into something, just bring it to council, let us take a look at it.
That's, and that's a reasonable approach.
Okay.
It's just, you know, hey, you know, market's high, I think I'll turn this guy one minute. There may be cases you want to give him a break, because he's going to get something else, so.
That's a, that's a workable approach.
Let, let us do that.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to adjourn this special meeting for the budget workshop. You keep asking. Five thirty-two.
Five thirty-two.
Thank you.
We'll leave this up here.
There is food. They have to get ready.
So is it?
You're welcome. M C C.
Gosh, I didn't know this. It's John, I looked at my phone, and he said. And I'm like, what is, what are you doing out here? And I, I'm like, oh, I'm, April told me, and I'm like, no, and you started knocking up there, and it went off. I didn't know. Microphone, I just took it off of the. Didn't go out of it. And he said, it works. But I said, why is he saying microphones out this season? That's crazy. I was like, oh my gosh. So anyway.